To Peartree Point Beach, the security guardhouse, gatehouse, right near the road, right near the chain link fence. As Pam submitted for the record, the current six by nine building is in disrepair. It gets beaten up pretty badly during winters, high tide, big windstorms, hurricanes. That little shack basically gets it. So Pam came to us with the proposal to put in a new replacement building that will be taken off-site during the off-season to make it last much longer.
It's got a little four cylinder engine, wheels sticking.
Well, I don't know about that. Certainly, she went to the Architecture Review Board, I believe you got a copy of that approval. She needs to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals because it's too close to the road.
Wow.
One of the issues here is if that hut, shack, gatehouse, whatever you want to call it, gets pushed further back, it really doesn't serve its purpose because it's too far into the property. It impedes access to the boat ramp and it really gums up the traffic flow and parking. So it really has to go close to the road and the ZBA recognized that. The issue here is the whole property is in the flood zone. Most of the property is in the velocity zone.
Yeah.
There are small parts of the property there AE-14, which is still in the flood zone, but not velocity. So no matter where Pam put it on the property, it's still going to be in the flood zone. So we did reach out to the state and said, "Look, we got a situation here." And they understood that, that it is, the state doesn't really like ZBA's granting variances for non-properly elevated structures, but in this case, they understand that there's no other way to do it. You can't have the guard walk down a flight of stairs. And even for the air conditioning in the structure, it would have to be eight feet in the air.
And it's essentially a temporary structure.
Portable, yeah.
What's nice is it'll be off-site and it's pretty much a prefab? Somewhat a prefab. Pam's going to tell you more about it. But it's just basically for security reasons.
Yeah, yeah.
And...
Well, check the beach stickers.
Check the beach stickers. And it's going to be within a few feet of the existing location. There is a provision in Section 813 of the regulations that the director and assistant director can go out to a site and if necessary waives the requirement for coastal site plan review. That was done in this case because literally you're just putting this thing on in the parking lot. So it doesn't impact coastal resources. The parking lot is not a coastal resource. And so we waived the coastal site plan review. The public park is as of right in the R1 zone. So Pam doesn't need a special permit for this. All she needs from the commission is review of work in the flood zone. And will this hut or shed have any flood impacts on neighboring properties? And the ZBA has granted a variance for the applicable heights and things like that.
Right, so we're not digging a foundation.
Nope, nope.
It's being, it's able to be lifted almost as a portable structure on a seasonal basis.
No bigger than an existing structure.
Right, so it's not going to...
In roughly the same location.
Right, no one's living there. So during a big flood...
There's no health, safety, welfare. All right, I don't really need to hear about the structure anymore. Okay, so anybody out in the audience like to comment on that? I don't see any unless you really want to get up.
I would just like to comment.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Pam Gary, Director of Parks and Recreation.
I'm sorry, didn't hear you.
Pam Gary, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that this would be an improvement to it because we will be taking it off-site. That security shed or hut has been there since 1960s.
It looks like it.
In that same spot, right? Maybe a different one at that point, but it stayed there 12 months out of the year. So I think it'll be a huge improvement to be removing it and only why it's there, why it's being used for four months and then off-site.
Oh, it looks better, too. I mean, okay.
Yeah, that's all I need.
Okay, I didn't see anybody else out there. So can you get a motion to close the public hearing? Wait a second. Yes, you're in. All in favor? Awesome. We're going to probably deliberate this later, but don't stick around, please. You don't have to.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number two, landfilling and grading application, number 189A, David Joyella, AD6, Near Water Lane. Proposal to regrade the rear yard of the property and install replacement stormwater retention system and inform related site development activities. The 1.25 acre subject property is located on the east side of Near Water Lane, approximately 350 feet south of its intersection with Nicholson Lane. And is shown on assessors map number 51 as lot number 62 and is located in the R1 zone.
If you've been to the site, you know it's, this property is at the end of a long driveway off Near Water Lane. It's an interesting circumstance in that a drainage system was installed, say, between, let's call it 10 years ago, plus or minus, and the system has failed. So the applicant is here on behalf of the property owner to talk about bringing in some necessary fill to put in a new cul-de-sac system right behind the house. You also have in your packets, letter from the neighbor, Mr. May, about his concerns about water flow and drainage issues that they've had in the neighborhood. Engineer Wayne DeVanzo is here on behalf of the applicant and can talk to you a little bit about the conversations he's had with Mr. May and how he can address the issues brought up by Mr. May. And Darren Austin, the Assistant Director of Public Works.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Wayne DeVanzo, D apostrophe capital A, V A N Z O, Beardsfield County Engineering. We are proposing basically replacing a failing retention system with 12 units of cul-de-sacs and bringing in the fill necessary to provide the adequate cover for it and separation from restrictive layers that were found there. We'll be routing the rare portion of the roof, the runoff from the roof, to the system. And it is adequately sized, it's sized for a hundred-year storm, actually. And, you know, we feel the existing one is too shallow, is bleeding out onto the property, causing part of the problem that they're having down lower and that the neighbor is concerned with. This should alleviate part of that. I spoke with Mr. May this afternoon and I think persuaded him that we at least won't be, we're making anything worse and this should be marginally improving it for now. There was some desire initially to do a little more comprehensive plan and take care of the lower area, which gets very soggy, which has sort of been put into a phase-two sort of a situation for now, mostly due to finances that require some more, you know, some more drainage structures and practices. But we are also looking at maybe down the line doing something as a joint concern with the neighbor to try to alleviate that whole area and to try to fix that up.
Jeremy, it's pre-existing condition, right?
Yes, the existing condition is that there's a problem with the drainage system.
Right, and they wouldn't be expected to, they'd be expected to fix the drainage system, right?
Yeah, I think that when Wayne brought this in, that was when you read through the application. That's really the justification for the application is really to find a way to get a new drainage system in there. And as Wayne mentioned, it's about 120 cubic yards of fill.
120 yards, yeah.
About seven truckloads.
About seven truckloads, yeah.
Because the test pit, when you explained to Darren, the test pit you did wasn't really great soil, so you're almost having...
It's not, yeah. It's got a high groundwater lay. The system that's in there, I think, is partially inundated all the time as it is. It's oriented the wrong way. It's a little undersized, I think.
Was it just built wrong at the time?
Yeah, it's built wrong and it's...
How old is it?
...one undersized, I think, as well.
10 years old?
About that, yeah. I think it was 2007.
So basically the fill gives you, gets you out of the groundwater?
It gets you out, and that's why we need to put, we have to need to get it up, elevate it and get the separation, get enough cover over it. So it's not an embankment, so it won't just bleed out the way it is now, give us that sort of distance and...
And your expert opinion is it will improve?
It should, you know, it's not going to totally solve certain, but it will, it should improve the situation now in that the runoff from the roof, I think at least, will be largely mitigated. There's still the rest of it that, you know, which comes from other properties, which comes from the lawn, which comes from other areas that hopefully later we can address, but...
And that's what I was kind of getting at. Like, in this, in this application, you wouldn't be expected to remedy that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I ask my question. Does anybody else have a question? All right, anybody out in the audience have any questions?
I have a question.
Sir, sir, yeah, sorry. Do me a favor, just introduce yourself and then direct the question to us and then we'll direct the question to him.
Sure.
My name's Jim Tweedy, I'm owner of 108 Near Water Lane, which is just south contiguous to this property. I don't know anything about this, other than I'm concerned that seven truckloads of fill is coming contiguous to my property.
Ask it, yeah, ask it.
Is that going to affect my property?
Great.
That's my question.
Perfect, good question. And then Jeremy, you can also talk about the regs as well in terms of where they can bring the fill up to and...
Right.
Okay, so...
And I'll let, Mr. DeVanzo is an engineer, I'll let him answer as an engineer. What they've done, what they've shown here on the plan is the fill is central on their property. It's more to create a flat area right behind the house and then a steep slope, somewhat steep slope. But basically, they're creating more of a flat area to put this new drainage system in, which should be an improvement over the existing. So they, Wayne has designed it such that the regrading is in the center part of the property, right, basically right behind the house, just up of the existing wall that goes through the middle of their backyard.
Mm-hmm. And will it raise the, already when they redid that house, it raised the property up above my property, although it doesn't seem to drain into my property, but they put a lot of fill in then. Is it going to raise the, even further?
Just the part right when you walk out their back door. That area, which is 40 feet right straight out their back door, will be lifted in the range of three feet? That's my estimation. Wayne can...
So 40 feet back, three feet up?
Yep.
But I think, I think the...
Within, no regrading within 20 feet of a property line.
Within 20 feet of my property line?
That's correct.
But I think the goal is, Jeremy, the goal of doing that is to keep water onto his property and not have it go on your...
That's my question. Is that going to come my way?
Well, other than the fact that you're downhill of the property.
I realize that. That's my question. Will it increase the amount of water that comes my way?
I'll have the engineer answer that question.
The goal would be no, but...
Yes, well, that's my...
Yes, yes.
I don't know anything about this.
Yeah, no, 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 it's good. You're asking the right questions, so, yes.
Yes, just to address that. No, we're not changing the drainage pattern at all. The drainage pattern is remaining as is, so no water is being redirected in any direction that it isn't already going. And we're not increasing the runoff amount at all. Hopefully, we're retaining more than is currently being retained.
Are there any impervious surface, Wayne?
No, no, no impervious surfaces. Nothing, nothing is being added.
So the way it is now, it will not, it will only improve the way it is now.
It should only...
I will see no increased water here.
I can see no reason that you would, yeah. It's a larger system, it's going to hopefully be installed properly and it should reduce what you're seeing right now.
And there's not, it's not going to, elevation's not going to increase on this side of the floor.
And over here, you're not going to get any increase. It's just, it's just that, you know, 40 feet or so from the house to here. From here on, it's from, from anything below that retaining wall is remaining untouched for the time being, at least.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, those are great questions, actually. Yeah, and the right, that's exactly what we try to mitigate, is not increasing water flow off the property onto another property. Anybody else out in the audience like to speak to this? Okay, anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thanks, everybody.
Item number three in the public hearing, landfilling and grading application number 449, Grand Harder 38, Christie Hill Road. Proposal to regrade the property to create a level rear yard associated retaining walls, install a new stormwater management system and perform related site home activities. The 0.52 acre subject property is situated on the southeast side of Christie Hill Road at the southeastern corner formed by its intersection with Oak Shade Avenue and is shown on assessors map number 27 as lots number 138 and 139 in the R1 zone.
This application is to construct a new retaining wall. As you can see, if you've been to the site, there's now a pool under construction that's been approved. And as the applicant was building the pool, they realized they wanted a flat area in the yard next to the pool. So this application is actually a cut and the creation of a wall on, let's call it the east part of the property, which would allow the applicant to have a flat backyard. To do that, they're keeping this new wall, which is in the range of three feet, two to three feet, at least five feet off the stockade fence, which is the eastern property line. Harry Rochefell is here from McCord Engineering to talk a little bit about the cuts, the proposed wall, and the drainage that they're going to be installing to accommodate the regrading. This is a property now as a house and, as I said, the pool's under construction in the, let's call it the southeast corner of the property.
Good evening. My name is Harry Rochefell, R O C H E V I L L E. I'm with McCord Engineering, representing the Harders. As Jeremy stated, there is an existing single-family residence on the property. The addition is to the rear of the property, rear off of the Oak Shade Avenue, the pink shape shown on the plan, and the pool is under construction as well. There is a, as along with the addition in the pool construction, there was a underground detention system that was installed. That is in the yard, the north yard along Christie Hill Road. As I said, that is already installed and that was designed to handle a great portion of that rear yard as the slopes do go gradually from east to west towards Oak Shade Ave. There are no new impervious areas proposed as part of this application. It is simply for the landfilling and regrading, specifically with that retaining wall being 10 feet off of the east property line. That wall...
Can we point out the retaining wall in the, you know, this orange shape that runs parallel to the line here, returns here, returns towards the pool.
So the idea of that wall was, as Jeremy stated, to create sort of a flatter recreational area in the middle portion of the yard, just north of the pool. We did some test pits on-site as part of this, just to ensure that by adding this wall, we wouldn't be collecting any groundwater with our perforated pipe that'll be installed behind the wall to control hydrostatic pressure and any infiltrated stormwater. That will, that pipe will be directed to a yard drain, which will go to the installed detention system. And as I stated, that detention system is adequate as installed to handle the entire backyard, as shown, as there was already curtain drains and trench drains proposed in the lower retaining wall, which were collecting that runoff anyway. So now we're just collecting it a different way. It's all going to the same place. There's about 130 yards net cut associated with leveling the backyard. And that could be, and the section that's shown on the top of the page is through the backyard from the retaining wall, right through the patio that's off of the back.
And remind me again, how tall is the retaining wall?
The top of wall is 87 in this area.
Yeah.
And bottom is 83.7, so it's about 3.3 in that area. And along the pool, it gets, I think, to 3.7 feet, but at no point does it get greater than four feet.
And you have some, I see some plantings along that wall or something? Is that what, those little circles or...
Yes, and actually, those are existing.
Oh, they're existing, okay.
Yeah, so the idea will be to save those.
Right, it's basically the only screening they would have from the neighboring house to the east, which is up, as you can see, it's 10 feet higher. So these trees, which will be on top of that platform, if you will, give them a little privacy while they're swimming.
Two questions. Is, so the entrance and exit via the parking area is actually at Oak Shade, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so I guess the property to the right, if you're looking at that, so it'd be number 40, Christie Hill. That property looks like it's right, how far is it between your retaining wall and the house that looks like it's not but 10 feet?
Yeah, I would say it's right around 20 feet from the retaining wall. Our retaining wall is shown 10 feet off the property line. I believe their house is just about 10 feet off the property line as well.
The stockade fence is the property line.
So there's 10 feet on either side of those?
Sounds about right.
It doesn't...
Approximately.
On the globe, on the...
Be careful, though, because you've got different angles.
Yeah.
And just for the record, couple commissioners are looking at Google Maps.
I would say not more than 10.
But, yeah.
But, yeah, that stockade fence, which is there now out in the field, really is pretty, it's within a foot of the property line.
You'd be looking, that's what I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
Because you're seeing this other house. Okay.
All right, any other questions?
And Harry submitted a March 5 memo with the details of his proposal.
Anybody out in the audience like to speak to this? Nope, this is great. Can I get a motion to close this hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, let's go, Kev.
General meeting. Item number four, mandatory parole number 1-2019, Parks and Recreation, Park and Villa Property, Nutmeg Lane. Request for report under CGS 8-24 for essential improvement to town property, including walking, cross-country path, and parallel parking along Nutmeg Lane.
So we asked staff to draft the positive mandatory parole, I guess?
Yeah, you have a copy of the draft in your packets, dated March 12th.
Good job talking about the proposal. They just saw EPC, what, last week?
For the cross-country path?
Yes.
The hearing was Wednesday, March 6th. It was continued to Wednesday, April 3rd.
Okay.
Commission might see it as soon as April 9th.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on this? None? All right, so do we have to vote on...
You have to vote to approve the report.
Could I get a motion to approve the report as submitted?
I move that we accept that report as submitted.
All in favor? Okay, great.
Report is here. Report issued.
Item number five, coastal site plan review, number 322. Flood damage prevention application number 371, landfilling and regrading application number 412. Jennifer Leary, Tennessee Gate Road, request for extension of time to commence project.
Do you remember the Seagate?
Yeah. They want to go to October 10th, 2019? Is there any reason why we shouldn't just go to the end of the year?
Did you talk to Paul Harris?
Yeah, I talked to Paul Harris earlier. The reason they're asking for the extension is they're having, they're working on selling their house in Greenwich and they'd like to sell it prior to beginning site work on Seagate Road. He's asking for a six-month extension here. If you were to grant more than that, they would certainly not object. Just so we don't have to see it again, I would just go to the end of the year if that's suitable. Yeah, so if you could just change that...
To December 31st, 2019.
Yeah, can I get a motion to have to vote on this?
Yep.
Okay, so we get a motion to approve the extension to December 31st, 2019.
All motions to approve the extension?
Second.
All in favor? All right, great.
Item number six, coastal site plan review, number 319, flood damage prevention application number 368, landfilling and grading application number 407. Dr. David Pereria, 20 Raymond Street, request for extension of time to commence and complete project.
Right, I don't think you have anything in your packets on this. We've been working closely with Steve Jones, who was the designer builder for Dr. Perera. It's the vacant lot at 20 Raymond Street.
There we go.
Yeah, we got it.
Oh, you got it? Okay, good. And basically, what they've run up against is to develop this very difficult lot, they had to go to Environmental Protection Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning and Zoning Commission. They, actually, earlier, later, late last year, late 2018, they did apply, they'd done their due diligence, they had sewer connection permits, all that. They did apply, their contractor applied for a zoning and building permit, got through zoning, got through building, and it sat in building. The contractor never picked it up and then had a dispute with Dr. Perera and thus, nothing was ever started construction. So they've reached out to us and said, "What do we need to do to get this back on track?" They have a new contractor on board. We noted that the EPC approval is still valid, but the ZBA is going to take up that question potentially on the 20th. And the question here is, when planning and zoning last left it, they gave them a completion date of May 2019, and certainly, they haven't started, so they certainly won't complete it in the next 60 days.
Do we, are we often given completion dates or start dates?
I think it varies.
Okay.
I think in this case, they're asking for an extension to get underway, and I think when we met with Dr. Perera, he said it would take about a year to build this thing.
Yeah, because of that whole cantilever design and...
Exactly. So they expect, if they, if the ZB, if they, if they need ZBA approval, they would go to ZBA in April, which would allow them to get started in May.
Right, so can we change this to a start?
Sure.
Construction date?
I assume that once they get started, they're going to keep moving on this.
Yes, so I would say, and now, and the site has been...
They've done some of the work, they did some of the tree work, they did some of the preliminary work in anticipation of the contractor moving along.
So it's kind of like a bare site now, last time I drove by. So we'd like to see this completed at this point. So why don't we give them a start time of September 30th? Do you think that's long enough or do you want to go even end of year?
I would think that would be reasonable to at least...
Start.
Start with the foundation.
Yes.
Which is really the first thing, is to have, not only have a foundation permit in hand, but to actually be...
But the concrete in the ground, yes.
Concrete foundation.
Okay.
Work, foundation work underway by...
September 30th, is that okay, folks? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve that amendment to, what is it, the amendment to the...
To the original coastal site plan review.
The original coastal site plan review to require that they commence with construction and have a...
Have the foundation underway.
Foundation poured by September 30th. Which is essentially a six-month extension of time. Perfect, that sounds reasonable, right? Okay.
All motions to approve the extension?
Second, all in favor? Okay, great.
Item number seven, update regarding Mike Nicolaus, Two Silver Lakes Drive, request for final certificate of occupancy and update on status of sidewalk.
I wish Steve was here, because this is his sidewalk there.
This is his, it's got him.
That now has turned into, seems like a quagmire to a certain extent.
Yeah, it's a very awkward situation because you may recall that this property is at the corner of Silver Lakes and Tokneke Road. Tokneke Road is a state highway, so the state has jurisdiction over this sidewalk. So Mr. Nicholas was proposing to build, and you may recall, it's an asphalt sidewalk. Now, it's about three to four feet wide. Well, the state has since redesigned the whole thing, so now it's a five-foot-wide sidewalk that's concrete.
Oh, really? The state is now saying, I mean, it looks like it was just like it's under attack.
Well, this little pathway, and now they're making it into a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk, and it pushed it, so now it's up partially on Mr. Nicholas's property.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Oh, it goes on, can they do that?
And, and he needs to give an easement, so now it's stuck in DOT legal, so that is his description. The latest is an email from Mike Nicholas to Tracy May yesterday. Mike saying, "I'm awaiting a review response from Matthew in the easement department. I would like to confirm that you've agreed to the sidewalk plan that I've drawn. Let me know if anything is needed." And then, of course, DOT says, "Once you've obtained the easement, have your engineers submit the easement documents and a plan showing the sidewalk, pedestrian ramp, and easement areas."
I don't mean to laugh, because I know this...
This is what they do in that great big building on 91.
Yes.
You know?
There's people up there whose job it is, all day, every day, to...
Just make life different.
So Mr. Nicholas is trying to get this along.
Yes, yes, so I guess, you know...
But what the issue we have, and normally, I've met with Mr. Nicholas numerous times. I said, "That's fine, if you take more time, you're working in good faith."
But now they're ready to move in, right?
Now, no, he's got a temporary CO, which we would be willing to extend. The problem is, his bank has said to him, "Come on, you've been there quite a while with a temporary CO. We need you to get a permanent CO."
We can't hold him responsible for this.
No, 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 absolutely not. So help us, how do we, how do we fix this?
My recommendation to the commission would be to issue a permanent CO.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that Mr. Nicholas still owns that adjacent property at number four.
Yeah.
And I think That's a good idea.
We both have the understanding that
We get that.
He's not going to be able to get a permit from this commission, or from our office, if that sidewalk isn't.
Yeah, I was thinking that or a bond, but that...
We can offer him the choice.
Okay, why don't we do that? What kind of bond would we do, like a $500 bond? No, we need a little, what?
Why make him pay more money? Just, just, we're clearly not going to approve anything else.
Okay, yeah, why don't you tie, yeah, we don't want him tied up.
No approval from him.
Yeah, no, thank you, thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
But it's not asphalt, yeah.
Okay, nothing permanent.
No, and again, it was like a valiant effort to, you know, on our part.
It's, it just, common sense goes out.
We learn, but we learn every time we do this stuff, right? When we did the model block down in the Rothen, down in the Rothen
Yep, DOT wants their public flash.
Business district.
David Genve is going through the same thing.
Yeah.
DOT wants things a certain way, and...
This stuff was built in, well, not in this case, but Post Road's been around for a long time without standards, but, okay.
Well, you look at Tokeneek Road, there's been an asphalt path three feet wide there. You would think DOT would have a little common sense and say, whatever you're doing, make it better. And I know Ed Gentile's had this problem on Hoyt Street, where they wanted just make it a little better, do a couple fixes, and the state said, "Nope, now you have to make it a fill-in-the-blank," which means now you need plans, because we need to see what you're doing, which means you need to hire an engineer, which means we need to then get our engineer.
All right, enough. I didn't mean to cut you off, but you know what I mean.
Right, but Mr. Nicholas has been through this for well over a year.
All right, so we'll get, so...
Either a bond or...
No, we're not doing a bond, just tie it to...
Permanent CO can be issued
Yeah.
With the understanding that no work can be done to number four till...
Okay, so this is going to be amendment to the...
To the flood damage prevention.
Okay, application. So can I get a motion to make an amendment to the flood damage prevention application to make it reliant on, that there's a sidewalk before, what, Two Silver Lakes?
Yes, along the south side of Two Silver Lakes Drive.
Silver Lakes. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Celebration.
Sorry, Mr. Neflix.
Starting the following, number eight, special permit application number one seventy-three A, exit Al Sani, eight forty-seven Boston Coast Road, propose to establish a hair salon, personal service establishment, first floor space, formerly occupied by Coco's Company.
Extremely straightforward. There were some concerns, but they weren't zoning-related issues, and I would think, I didn't see any need to change it.
Everyone was at the hearing?
I'm sorry?
Everyone was at the hearing? Not, no?
This was last week, correct?
But we still have a quorum, we still can vote.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So can I get a motion as submitted, to approve as submitted, I'm sorry?
Jim Rand?
Kev, I need you.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Three to zero. It was abstaining.
Unless you watched it and...
I honestly didn't watch.
Okay, well then...
But I read the packet.
Yeah.
Number nine, flood damage prevention application number three ninety-one, Vogel Properties Services LLC, six seventy-nine, six eighty-five, Boston Coast Road, propose to regrade the front and side yards of the property to create a low point and to install stormwater management features, install generator and HVAC unit on platforms, and to form related segment activities within that area.
Can we just take a pause? Jeremy, you just want to tell Mr. Nicholas what we did?
Yeah, Mr. Nicholas, they, the commission basically authorized me to, and Mr. Keating, grant you a permanent CO with the understanding that no work can go ahead at number four, but until then, you get a permanent CO, keep working with DOT.
And we're sorry you had to go through that. We were good intentions and...
I, I, I know, and I want to thank you all, I know you'd rather be homeless than you're dealing with a little...
No, but it's partially our problem that you're dealing with the state, so...
We're going to get it done.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck, sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, so back to that.
Yes, this is Mr. Vogel's property. They were doing a little drainage to eliminate the, I'll call it the water problem in the corner, eastern corner of the building, straightforward draft resolution relative to the drainage system that they're installing.
Again, these are too many easy ones lately. I didn't have any changes to the draft resolution. Anybody have any comments?
I have no comments.
All right, can I get a motion to approve as submitted?
Motion. Jim, I'll second it.
All in favor? Great, that's good.
It's revocating, got it.
Number ten, amendment, a special permit application, number eleven, our site plan Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club, five twelve middle six road, request to install a warm-up ring.
You have a letter in your packet from Amy Zavatakis, who's here this evening, to talk a little bit about this riding ring, which will be used, I believe, exclusively during the horse show, but, or mostly during the horse show, when they need a place for horses to warm up before they're, call it...
Routine?
Routines, if you want.
Competition.
Yes, and so this new warm-up ring is shown on, as part of the attachment that Amy submitted.
I can't believe you haven't picked up the equestrian nomenclature.
Yeah, we're working on it, it's going to take a while.
Ms. Zavatakis.
Amy Zavatakis, Richard Lover. I don't have much to add to the letter, but just the brief here in case you have any questions. But yes, basically, the United States Equestrian Federation does require a certain amount of warm-up or schooling areas for equestrian competitions, and so they need this additional space where there'll be practice jumps before horses go into the main ring for their competition.
So there's three rings there. Is that what I saw?
There's two, there's two outdoor rings right now, one indoor ring, and this will be for the June show that's outdoors, or other horse shows that are outdoors, so they have this warm-up space before they go into the main, larger ring.
Okay, and my only other question was, I thought that was kind of the area where the tents were going to go for, like, outdoor activities, that sort of thing, so help me...
The tents are, the tent, what they've sort of referred to basically, vaguely as the event lawn, is actually closer to the building, so they purposely put this
Right on the property line?
To the property line. You know, it is not right on the property line, it's the same location as the, one of the larger rings.
Yeah, that's right.
But there's still plenty of space for there to be tent space, et cetera, there.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
Right, so this is 25 feet from the northern boundary.
And it's, well, that's within, they're allowed to do it, correct?
It's just, it's a modification of the site.
Just a question for, so I understand where everything happens. These three against the property line are what we're talking about, correct? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Yeah, I was curious, she's going to use a point, what's different?
Okay.
Okay, no, you're, sorry, you're in the wrong area entirely. That's, those are the paddocks. These, this is the large ring that's been there for some time.
Can you lay it flat?
Yeah, it's over here. Okay, this is, this is the large ring that's been there forever.
And this is the new town property?
Right, right, and here's the middle section.
This is the large ring that's been there forever. This ring was added and has been approved by the town. This smaller ring right here is what we're talking about adding. And Miss Cucini, that's, exactly, that's the, that event area.
I'm sorry, Amy, when you say adding, you're simply just making that area flat.
There, it will be, it will be a sand ring, so it'll be flat with sand on it and a fence around it.
Is there going to be any net fill in there?
No, it'll be, I mean, they have to, in order to make it, let me go back to that. Thank you.
Well, we liked your housing up here.
So for a, for a riding ring surface, there is, they'll have to dig out and put, it's sort of a stone base, and then there's what looks like sand, it's in the equestrian community called footing, but, so it will not be a net fill, it will be flat, but they do have to dig down in order to have the drainage.
You're taking stuff out, and then you're putting a different material in. You're not necessarily adding more, you're not raising it up.
It's kind of like a turf field, when they put in the drainage underneath, they dig it out, put the drainage underneath, and lay the turf on top.
Precisely, yes, and so, yes, and so that's designed so that, so that it will drain, so if there's rain, you can still use the riding ring. And that's the same way as the other riding rings were designed and built.
Who knew you needed three outdoor rings now?
Perhaps if they'd known that ahead of time, we would have asked for it the first time. I apologize for that.
No, 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 it's, listen, it's a big project, it's coming along.
Yep.
And I think we're going to hear an update on that, actually. So could I get a, it's amendment to site plan?
Yes.
Could I get a...
All motions to amend the site plan?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jeremy, you got an update associated with that project, it sounds like?
Sure. Next on the agenda is an update on Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club. As you all know, construction's been ongoing there for a while. I was calling a few weeks ago, we had numerous issues with the anti-tracking pad, making sure that dirt wasn't getting into the road. Dave Keating's been working with these gentlemen out, who are sitting in the second row, on trying to eliminate getting dirt in the road, which means getting the anti-tracking pad, which is just rocks at the end of the driveway that trucks can drive over to not bring the dirt on their tires in the road.
And some cleaning areas too, right?
Cleaning areas, washing areas. For the past week or two, Jonathan has been, who's part of the construction company, has been sending us pictures at the start and the end of the day to show that it's in good shape both at the start and at the end. What we want to make sure, it's also in good shape during the middle of the day, that at two in the afternoon, if you're not driving through the neighborhood, you're not going to see dirt all over the street, like, that's the whole point of the erosion controls.
Yeah.
So we're going to continue to monitor it, we're going to continue to work with their team on making sure that not only at the start of the day and the end of the day, but during the day, because there's nothing worse than there's big piles, clumps of dirt, or things that fall off the trucks, or whatever it might be, that are falling on the main highways of Darien, and those end up getting into...
And totally acknowledge, it's been probably one of the wettest, I've been here twenty, nineteen years, by far one of the wettest time periods, but still, there were some pretty nasty days out there, so please, continue to work well with staff. We kept pretty close to having staff back here, and we didn't want to do that, so...
Right, well, Dave asked me, "Do I need to come tonight?" I said, "Not tonight, but if we need you..."
A zoning enforcement officer, yes. I don't want to see, I love Dave, but I don't want to see him again, so, on this issue, anyway. So that's, that's great.
The key is not only at the beginning of the day, not only the end of the day, but during the day.
Yes, please, and again, like, I know it's, we know it's been wet, but it's been pretty gnarly out there, so you've heard us. Thank you. All right, next item.
Update of status regarding marijuana, marijuana moratorium of dispensaries and production facilities.
And so, I don't, you weren't here before, okay, so, well, Jeremy's going to tell us about it, but we, the town's put in place a moratorium when medic, you're welcome.
It was a temporary moratorium.
Yeah, temporary moratorium, yeah, so...
Right, so this is back a few years ago, when the state of Connecticut first allowed medical marijuana, they had dispensaries and production facilities. And at the time, the town of Darien had to make a decision, do we will allow, want to allow one or the other, and the Planning and Zoning Commission said, "No, let's have a moro," we've never allowed them in the history of Darien.
Well, it wasn't even legal.
It wasn't legal, and so the commission said at that time, "Let's have a moratorium, temporary moratorium, while we consider, consider what's going to happen around us."
So in that, I'll just stop you there. We were just trying to understand how this is going to play out statewide. I mean, it's a brand-new statute that allows medical marijuana dispensaries. We really had no idea to handle, how to handle it, like, even other, I think this is kind of ahead of the ballgame in, relative to other states.
How the state would regulate it, how many dispensaries they would allow, what the restrictions are. There's a lot of conditions that the state puts on dispensaries and production facilities that were unknown at the time.
And so Mrs. Liu, who's in the audience, asked me about it when we were at some local event, so it sparked my mind that, wow, we haven't talked about this for a while, and the moratorium is now, well, it probably expired, right?
Well, I think what, what my opinion is, is that that use has never been allowed in Darien, so that is the premise I continue to go on. I did speak to John Louizos earlier today
Oh, good.
And talked about that, what John mentioned to me is, the state, the surround, many of the surrounding states allow the sale of recreational marijuana, marijuana used for non-medical purposes. And so if the state of Connecticut does pass that, what are the ramifications for Darien? And so I've started working with the town attorney on how, what might be the next steps for the town to make that decision. Certainly, it will come down to the nature of legislation passed, whether a decision needs to be made by the Planning and Zoning Commission on how to regulate locally, or whether it would go to the RTM, the legislative body, to pass an ordinance.
And that's what the article in, that I asked to include, was it Westport, right?
Westport, right.
Is this, generally speaking, analogous to Wilton and no alcohol?
I think in many ways it is, where...
Because alcohol was legal in the state of Connecticut, but Wilton, and other places probably, but Wilton forbade it.
Right, Wilton said specifically, "We don't want," till, till about three, four years ago, Wilton didn't allow liquor stores. So certainly, the town will be able to regulate it in some way, shape, or form. There's now one, I think one liquor store in Wilton, right on Route Seven. So the question is, and again, it depends on this, any state legislation, how that may play out for future regulation locally, and what does the town wish to do. So John Louizos and I are going to keep an eye on that. We'll probably report back to you in a couple months with what happened at the state, and what are the next steps for the town.
Okay, so bottom line, there's no reg locally that would allow it, therefore, somebody would have to come in and try to amend the regulations before it would be allowed, and therefore, the process, like any reg amendment, public hearing, discussion...
Why is it, why couldn't they do it?
Right, this is what John Louizos and I discussed on the phone earlier today.
And there was no regulation against tanning salons or that...
Well, here, listen, this is...
So here's the, exactly what you said, Jim.
Good question.
The question is, is, in the history of the town of Darien, have we ever allowed marijuana be sold out of a storefront? The answer is no. That's one argument. It's never been allowed in town, there's nothing in the regs that specifically allow it. Someone else can make that exact argument you had, Jim. Look, we allow retail uses, and whether you're selling folders, or microphones, or men's shirts, we still retail.
Or even alcohol, right?
Or alcohol, right?
Or new technology that was...
Or new techno, right, iPods, right? Verizon sells iPods, those weren't...
So maybe the point is that we have to decide whether we're going to not permit it, as opposed to whether it will be permitted.
I, I agree with what I understand to be the thrust of Mrs. Liu's request, which is do something.
Right, the question is...
How do we do?
Right, so I'll, I'll continue to work with town council on what are the appropriate next steps, and is that a town ordinance, which might be the next step, which is, this town is saying, "We don't," right? "We don't allow plastic bags anymore, or we don't allow the sale of marijuana, or we don't allow dogs off-leash, or whatever." It might be a town ordinance, and not so much as zoning, which would be RTM, maybe not so much as zoning regulation. So that is really where we're trying to figure out...
What's the best path?
And does the RTM want to be proactive? So is that the right forum for this question? And so we're looking at, we just started looking into it.
So, and, and again, I, you know, we can have a discussion if we ever get an application, but my view would be, that doesn't fall into any of our categories, like, and for certain, like, the Salt Cave, we did have to allow for a special permit review, right? So service-oriented business, we typically have, although, are we...
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, as new tech, just what Liz says, there's new technologies that Salt Cave weren't around five years ago.
New products, infrared, sauna.
Right, these, cryotherapy, et cetera, et cetera, there's lots. So I think there's a couple issues here. We're still starting to research in terms of what the next steps might be. Again, we don't know if the legislation at the state level is going to pass, too early to tell, but at least to be prepared and anticipate.
Yeah, so you're doing the legwork, and so you'll come back to us in four to six weeks, is that a reasonable plan?
I would guess that's a reasonable time.
Good?
Good, all good questions.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on.
Skip item thirteen, which was my update from the Blake Commission, and then we'll go straight to the deliberations.
Table that to your, when is your next Blake meeting, do you?
Uh, next week.
Okay.
So probably the following.
Okay, just, we'll throw it to Jeremy and he'll put it on.
Flood damage prevention application number three ninety-nine, town of Darien, Partridge Tree Point Beach, one thirty-nine Partridge Tree Point Road, proposal to replace an existing security gatehouse with a six-by-nine gatehouse, a few feet from its existing location and form-related site development activities within the regulated area.
Okay, so let's deliver it, it's, I have seen no problem with it, I think it's no problem.
I see no problem.
All right, given that, Fred, do you have something that... All right, given that, Fred, do you have something that-
Move to vote?
Well, what, what we can do is put together, we've put together kind of a very basic resolution, the issue here is, obviously, the gatehouse, Pam's goals to have it up and running by Memorial Day, which she realized is about 10 weeks away, she's still got to order the shed, get it delivered, things like that, so Fred has put together a few notes in anticipation of-
Deliberations and-
Deliberations, so, you can read through his notes and take a minute or two to read through that, and then if you want, you can certainly vote on it.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's, oh, my bad.
It's one of the chairman, you read them.
Do you want, I mean, it's a few pages, so I'm not going to, let's just review them quite quickly.
Okay.
What we'll do is take everything into consideration that was, uh, talked about tonight at the public hearing and deliberated on tonight, and incorporate, incorporate that into a, a final draft resolution, which will go ahead and circulate to the commission.
Okay.
Um, and then we're going to vote on the final draft next week, or how do you want to?
Do you want to do it next week, or do you want to vote tonight, or the week after? Next week is, the big event for next week would be the zoning regulation-
Let's just vote on it next week, one week's not going to screw them up, right?
One week won't screw it up.
Okay, but you have a, you have a, Jim, positive, I think you pretty much wrote it, but, is that okay?
Next week is good.
Put it, I mean, first on the agenda even, Jim, whatever.
First on the agenda, good.
It's a town-oriented thing, so we'll put that ahead of-
All right. Question only regarding the following, if public hearings are closed, time permitting, land filling and regting application number 198A, David Joyell in 860 Water Lane, proposal to regrade the rear yard of the property and install a replacement storm water retention system and to perform related site development activities.
My comment is only, you know, put the regular language we do, just, you know, let it, any waters don't infringe upon the neighbor, but, uh, run off, I should say, now, what. And anything else, guys?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
That sounded good.
Land filling and regting application number 449, Bryn Harder, 388 Christie Hill Road, proposal to regrade the property to create a level rear yard with associated retaining walls, install a new storm water management system, and to perform related site development activities.
Um, I would, my comment would just be to make sure that, that, you know, it, it conforms with the site plan like the screening and such, just given the proximity of the neighbor's house, but that, that would be the only thing I would kind of highlight.
It's a good one, yeah.
Yeah, agree.
All right, and, next one?
That's it, approval of minutes, February 26, 2019.
Uh, do we have enough people here? Sini Cunningham, Rand, yes. Um, I got nothing. You, it's Rand.
I have no comments.
All right, can you motion to approve as submitted?
I move that they be approved.
Kev, I need you. All in favor?
Three to zero, one extension.
All right, last?
Uh, calendar, project status update?
Sure, uh, project status, remind me, I have one other business item, uh, calendar, next week is the public hearing on the zoning regulation amendments, the big booklet from Glenn, uh, that'll be in the Mather Center.
Wow, you got kicked all the way there?
It is the busiest time of year, so we're, we're in the Mather Center next week.
That's, that's a lot of-
That's a lot of meetings.
We're usually like-
Tuesday night at 8:00.
Well, do we come fourth or third on the, uh?
It was just one of those things that, it's a, we weren't supposed to meet next week, so we, and it, it didn't make sense to move some people, I think Board of Finances is in here and some other people, so-
I would love to kick it out, not just joking. All right.
That'll be a very full night, uh, we're getting some good feedback, we've sent out the proposed regulations and map amendments to lots of people.
Oh, oh, this, wait, so which ma-
These are the seven properties in town.
Okay, so the specific properties, not the municipal use, okay.
Not the municipal use will be in April.
Okay.
So, the seven specific properties that the commission discussed, one on Old Kings Highway, uh, one was on West Avenue-
Post Road, the Hallstead Building?
Uh, nope, that didn't make it in.
Okay, because we decided not to make it.
But I did meet, Fred and I did meet with Mr. Hawes subsequent to that, and he's considering whether to bring that proposal separately.
Oh, good, okay.
Good, one of the issues we had, and I mentioned this to John, is when we put these forth, we really needed good maps to show what we're rezoning, usually you get a survey and you draw it out, so, on some of the properties we discussed, we couldn't piece together a map good enough, like the gas station was one where we're like, at the corner of Tokineak Road and Five Mile River, right? We, we're like, we don't even, we can't even draw it out on a map, so, you'll see that the six or seven that are coming before you next Tuesday, uh, you may get the property owners here saying, "Yes, please rezon it", or "No", or whatever comments they have.
Oh, wait, but you've reached out to every property owner?
We have sent a letter to each of those property owners, and we've sent letters to everybody within 100 feet of those property owners, and we've emailed the proposal out to land use attorneys, engineers, surveyors, architects.
Okay.
So, we can expect the owners of the seven, some or all of the seven, plus, where are the surrounding others that come up?
We have actually got some interesting feedback from some of the seven property owners.
Okay, and if they can't be here, you'll provide an email or something, or the feedback or something.
Well, one person has said, "I can't be there", I've said, "Please send an email, the commission can decide whether they want to keep the hearing open for your comment. If you know what your comment is, send the comment to the commission, you're in favor, you're not in favor, whatever it might be, but if you can't make it, send it", so there has been one person who said, "I can't make it",
Yeah.
I said, "Maybe the commission will leave the hearing open, we can decide that next week."
Yeah, or if they want to provide an email, I, I mean-
An email would be helpful.
I think, I think we want to be as, uh, understanding of the property owners, we're not trying to ram any of these through, if you would.
And, and that's what I said, I said, "The inclination will be to continue the hearing for a couple weeks to give you an opportunity to make a voice", and it could be that there's so many different items that we continue the hearing on, the reg changes.
Okay, and those, those business zone reg changes, can we get the, the, um, the